We are calling to order this meeting of the Amherst-Palom Regional School Committee at 6:38 PM, seeing the presence of a quorum. If people are following along with the agenda as posted, unfortunately, we're not able to convene a joint meeting with Union 26 School Committee due to late posting of this agenda. And so we are going to forego the executive session jointly with Union 26. We're also going to forego item number two, which is called "Potential Shift of Role of Finance Director," for a future date on January 29th.
Twenty-second, I think.
Twenty-second? Okay.
Yep.
Then twenty-second.
Yeah, that's the agenda we looked at today, which we included.
So we're gonna add, you're gonna add, you're gonna add a regional meeting to the Amherst meeting, since we're meeting anyways as part of the ADA audit, and then we're gonna go into executive session.
Yes.
For all of you following it, huh? This is how you coordinate agendas when it's getting a little complicated. The point is, we're not talking about it tonight. And I guess we are talking about the twenty-second. And it'll still be an executive session. There you go.
Both a public and open.
So our first order of business, then, is to enter executive session in accordance with National General Law, Chapter 30A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Houston versus Amherst-Palom Regional School Committee, because as chair, I find that an open meeting would be detrimental, have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the committee, and we do plan to return to open session upon conclusion of the executive session. So I saw a move. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's take a roll call vote, starting on this end.
Sullivan, aye.
Benino, aye.
Dumbly, aye.
Spencer, aye.
McDonald, aye.
Nakajima, aye.
Gosensky, aye.
Or Jonas, aye.
Great. We are in executive session. We'll return in a few minutes. Thank you very much. Seeing the presence of a quorum, we're gonna re-enter into our Amherst-Palom Regional School Committee meeting at 7:11. Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2018. I don't know if the committee's on an opportunity to review those minutes. If you haven't, please do so now. Also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018?
Move to approve them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any edits or comments or other sort of miscellaneous? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of December 11th, 2018 signify by raising your hand. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. So it should be then. What's wrong with me? Seven yes, zero no, and one abstention. Yay! Let's teach math. Announcements and public comments. We're open for announcements from the committee, if there are any. Are there any announcements in the committee? Mr. Dumbly?
Just wanted to briefly mention a few things in the national news that are directly affect a potential advocacy issue that the committee may want to be involved in next couple of weeks. One is the district of Los Angeles is currently, the teachers are striking 30,000 teachers, second-largest school district in the nation, really fighting for base-level funding. They're dealing with things like class sizes in the forties. And then there's a big privatization theme there about the pushing of charter schools and refunding of public schools. Last month, the second sort of update was that New Orleans voted that by 2022, there will be no more public schools, one of the largest cities in the South. That's all charter now.
Say that again.
So by 2022, this is McDonough District decision, McDonough 35 District, they voted to go charter, and now in New Orleans, all schools are charter schools. There are no more public schools in New Orleans. And yesterday, the Commissioner of Education and the Mayor of New Bedford and the Board of Education agreed to a charter school expansion, which is strongly opposed by teachers, parents, apoplectic. They'll be demonstrating outside of the headquarters of Destiny and Malden on Monday. And so I just sort of say this all because we have our own charter expansion on our doorstep, and obviously, we fight that for reasons of budgetary preservation and impact to our community, but it really does exist in this broader context of this war that is going on, this well-funded, coordinated war, that I don't think is an exaggeration to say is an existential threat to public schools. I mean, they don't exist anymore in New Orleans. And, you know, if we continue to think that it couldn't happen here, that's when it becomes more easily done. And so I think when we engage the community and the press and all that, it's important to be mindful of that larger context.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll open to public comment. If there are any public comments, please come forward, approach the microphone, identify yourself, you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Mary Lou Conca. I'm on the Wellness Committee as well as the Equity Task Force. Greetings. I'm here to say, to speak on my own behalf, that when you start passing out the money that you consider, that you really, really consider funding organic food for our schools. And for reference, there is a school in California who has gone all organic and GMO-free, and the superintendent of that school gives testimony to an overall behavior for the better change in the children, as well as their health. It's gonna be a lot better, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? In the, I think it's an unlikely event, but in the event that we see people coming in who thought the public comments section would be still open, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve with the committee's approval the right to offer additional public comment in a few minutes, because although, I don't wanna, you know, if somebody knew the agenda that otherwise happened. But in other words, I want to move on and still be productive. Subcommittee updates. I know budget, man, right?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to talk about around the update on?
We were just basically informed of a number of issues with an update.
Any particular fun ones you'd like to?
Fees, the fiduciary for investment funds, capital planning, and a policy, a definite, a list of definitions to be included in procedure manual. It was basically an update.
That sounds like a great meeting.
It lasted over an hour.
There you go. And it must have been a great meeting. Are there other, other subcommittees that have met and would like to update us on the meetings?
Thank you. So the School Equity Task Force met just this past week, and we're actually gonna be hearing from some of the students tonight who are in the Restorative Justice Program here at the high school. And we also have been talking to the co-principals at the middle school to hear more about their thinking and planning around restorative justice and perhaps bringing that as a curriculum to the school. So, you know, I don't want to take up too much time with that, because we will be hearing more about that later, but just wanted to kind of give a little forecast for the committee on that. And then I've also had a few meetings with Amherst Media, as a representative to Amherst Media, who has been, they have been working on their capital campaign at this point to build a new building on Main Street and Gray Street. So they are underway on that campaign, and also looking for support from the community for all the work that they do. So if any of you feel so inclined, they can always use both letters of support and also just, you know, sharing information about their capital campaign and the work that they do here in the community, so.
Great. Are there other committees that have met? CPAC met?
Not recently.
Oh, okay. Then we'll, we'll move on. You know, it's funny, I remember, I remember like last year or something, it seemed like there was always like a dozen committees colliding with one another, like, like little meteors or something like that. Superintendent's update.
I shared with the chair earlier that, given that our end time is slated to be 10:30, I'll defer the update, other than the ones that come up in the agenda items specifically below, because I do have updates in a number of those.
Okay. And actually, to the chair, I'd say the same thing, because we're gonna talk about the assessment formula and budget later. I do think that precisely because there's a real, I think it increased saliency around charter school expansion, that I think we should talk about, I mean, we're not gonna do it right this second, but we should talk about when there is a recommendation from the commissioner, we should talk about how we want to approach delegation from the area going to Boston and advocating. And in my mind, even though I hadn't done it previously, I'm inclined actually to go and speak myself, my recommendation to other chairs of other committees, would be that they also go and represent their committees, because I think having, having, we haven't done it before, even when we've won, we haven't done it before, having that kind of presence of, and I'm assuming the superintendent intends to go and advocate.
Yes.
That I think it would create even more of an impression that we took the time to offend, and then we should think about what our comments are gonna be and even discuss them in advance. So I think, again, having that kind of solidity and weight behind what we're doing, I think would be more impressive than, than not doing that, and so in thinking that the letter somehow speaks for itself. So I'll leave it at that, but I was just giving, it's funny you're saying that, because I was actually giving thought to that question over the last few days. Anyway, anyone else want to make a public comment? No? Okay, now it's 7:20, so we're actually at the point where we're gonna close public comment. And we're actually on to new and continuing business. We have, we're running a half an hour ahead of time now, so I was wondering if we need to move something else up in the agenda? Superintendent?
We certainly could. I'm also sensitive that there are some folks here with little ones, that if they could present early, and there are some medium-sized ones. No, that's what I'm referring to them. I wasn't referring to.
Aren't there, aren't there things in the agenda that we would, I mean, what are the implications of the agenda?
So I was thinking that we could start with perhaps well-being and learning about the Bright program as the first thing. I know some people are coming back in ten minutes for the restorative practices piece, but if we could perhaps start with that and then transition.
We're running a half an hour ahead of time.
Yeah.
So my guess is we can, we can, we can be very respectful to the well-being group and still be really respectful to the restorative practices group, right?
Yeah.
Let's do that. You okay with that? Everyone is okay with that?
Yep.
So we, any introduction?
Yeah, I would. So when we talked about well-being, well, this is a topic I'd like to come back to. Certainly, Dr. Gramacki and I have spent quite a bit of time actually this week talking about this more generally, but what we thought, given the feedback, was for the school committee to learn more about the Bright program. So there was original presentation a couple of years ago, but I think most of the members were not on the regional school committee, like maybe two or three were at most, when hearing about it. So there's a longer slide deck. I know Karen Peters who's here is gonna describe, just a couple of the pages, because we're trying to keep these to five minutes, so that there's time for a question and answer, to describe what the Bright program is, what it does, and what services it supports students. And I know Dr. Gramacki and Dr. Brady are here also as integral players in that program.
And you will not be allowed to sit there and do it. We have a microphone and cameras, though I apologize in advance, but y'all look very comfortable, that's what I was just gonna say.
Well, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with you, and I have coffee. Oh, you all.
Yeah.
Debbie.
My name's Karen Peters. I'm the social worker in the Bright program, and I've been here for five years, and the Bright program has also been here for five years. So I wanted to just spend a few minutes sharing a little bit about some of the work that we do here at the high school and the students that we serve, and make sure I leave a few minutes for questions. I do, as Dr. Morris said, we do have a longer slide presentation for you that is there, and if there are questions that come up after you read that, I'd be happy to answer them as well. So I'm just gonna highlight a few things from our presentation. Like I said, this is the fifth year of the Bright program, and we are a part of a network of programs that began in 2004 at the Brookline, with the Brookline Center and Brookline High School as a response to a growing population of students who were dropping out of school after a mental health crisis or a medical crisis. And so now, in 2019, my understanding is there's 140 programs in the state of Massachusetts? 102 programs in the state of Massachusetts. And we were the first program in Western Mass. And we often serve as a place where student, programs in the state, in this part of the state, who are interested in starting a Bright program, come and learn about what we do. A few years ago, we held a regional meeting, and I think there was representatives from about 10 area schools. And so that's something that we feel really proud of being a part of doing. I wanna move to, keep going.
I can't get it to, I gotta, they probably do reset it up because of that change, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So I just wanna move through this part quickly, where we talk a little bit about how we are, some of the services that we provide. We are what we would call, through that multi-tiered system of support, the Bright, the Bright model is a general education tier-three support for students at the highest need. And we offer four key supports, and those are academic supports, clinical support, family support, and care coordination. There are two full-time staff in the Bright program. I'm one of them, and I'm a licensed social worker. We also have a para educator who serves as our academic coordinator, and she does a lot of the liaison work with teachers. When students come back from an extended absence, they're often faced with an enormous amount of makeup work, and some of the things that we really work closely with teachers to do is identify what are the key learning objectives. Let's not bog students down with a bunch of work. Let's help them identify the key things they need to learn and get them back in the classroom and get them back feeling like they're a part of the school community. And I think, just to back up a minute, the need that this program really responds to is when a life issue, like a mental health crisis or a medical issue comes up, we really want to keep students connected to their education, and we don't want them to feel like they have to make a choice between healing and recovering and being a student. And so having a home base in the building that teachers and resources come to them until they're ready to be back in the classroom has been just, I think, a very meaningful on-ramp for them to get back into the classroom and feel like they belong here in this community, which is what we really want them to feel themselves and their families. Okay, so, just gonna move along here. I'm gonna move to some of the, I just highlighted a few pieces of data that I thought might be meaningful to you all. Like I said, we've been here since this 2014, 2015 school year, and we've enrolled 124 students in Bright. Thirty-six of those students have been enrolled for more than one admission, and what that means is that they've had more than one mental health or medical crisis, or they've had a relapse in their symptoms that have caused an extended absence. The types of students that are referred to us are students that have experienced a suicide attempt, students who have persistent and consistent depressive symptoms that keep them stuck or out of school, and their, their functioning is really impaired, students with significant anxiety. We've had students with chronic medical issues, like we had a student a few years ago with Crohn's disease, who really hadn't been in school for more six months before he came to this district, and Bright supported him in being able to graduate. And I saw him in the community working recently, which was wonderful. So we also have students with post-concussive syndrome. And after our third year, when we figured out what we were doing a little bit more successfully, the recommendation, and I think the big response from guidance counselors and other folks in the school was, can you take students earlier? Can we work to prevent some of these crises so that students aren't in that situation before we know what they're dealing with and struggling with? So we started taking students what we would call a preventative referral. And our, the data I compiled suggests that 45% of our students from 2014, 2016 to this current year are the preventative support referrals. And these are students that have growing absences that oftentimes are identified with an emerging mental health issue, a medical issue, or some sort of circumstances in life that is causing their functioning and their family's functioning to be incredibly impaired. There's some other demographic data around some of our students that might be helpful for you to see. And then I really highlighted, there's the next two slides from now, I highlighted some of the data from last year that I thought was pretty meaningful. So we supported 29 students. Nine of those students had stayed with us for the part of the, of last year due to continued struggles. We had a few students that had second and third concussions, unfortunately. And 100% of those students were general education students. We had about 34% of the students refer for special education evaluation, because some of the things that they were struggling really rose to the level that we felt like they needed longer-term support, or at least an evaluation to be supported. And then there's a few other pieces of data from last year that I thought were important to highlight. 100% of our students participate in regular counseling support, where we really work to build their distress tolerance skills, emotion regulation skills, and coping skills, so that when they experience some of the things that have kept them home or increased their level of distress, they're able to put some things in place so that they can be in class and be in school and participating in their life. We had 83% of our students demonstrate improvement in attendance, 79% demonstrate stability or improvement in grades, 95% of students reported learning new coping strategies, and 83% of those students reported using those skills regularly. I thought that was interesting, that those two numbers were different. And 79% of the students demonstrated more stability in the presenting symptoms, and that data comes from parents, from teachers, and from our staff. And we had one senior last year, and so I wanted to make sure I highlighted that. That was a little misleading. One student, 100%, but she did graduate. Okay, and a few things that, you know, we really are committed to continuously improving our program and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our student by collecting data from students, from teachers, from our parents, from the community providers that we work with. In 2016, we started working with Smith College to bring a graduate student intern into the program under my supervision, and what that really does is increase our capacity to provide support at the tier-three level, but also it trickles to the, the other clinical supports the school is able to provide. So having intern support really is not only for Bright, but for the tier-one and tier-two supports that we offer. We collect data from our students and families at the end of the year with a survey. And last year, through parent leadership, we had a small parent leadership team, and they brought the idea together of, why don't we create a parent orientation program to really support the families when they're entering the Bright program? Because we know that mental health or medical crisis isn't just in the student, the whole family is affected. So we had 11 out of 12 new families participate in that last year, and we're continuing that this year. And we also, another thing that we started doing this year, really in response to what I know that a lot of our students are working on in outpatient therapy and what I think is effective practice, we introduce DBT and other coping skills every week in the Mil U and share those with families, so that those skills are translatable at home, and families can practice those things as well. How am I doing on time?
You're doing fine. Actually, just DBT is probably not a term that everybody is.
Thank you. Dialectical Behavior Therapy, and there's four key components of that. It's really working on distress tolerance, regulating emotions, managing interpersonal conflict, and mindfulness. And there's a lot of skills that we can practice in quick two-to-three-minute increments with students that we can really help them repeat, repeat, repeat. And another thing that's exciting this year is the middle school is exploring the possibility of starting a Bright-type model to support their students. I just wanna highlight a few other things, if that's okay. Like I said before, we were the first Bright program in Western Mass, and we're very proud of that, and it's been wonderful to get a lot of feedback from other regional schools, asking for our input, asking to come and visit, and sharing our resources with them. We had a student invited to speak at the State House two years ago with legislators to share her story about mental health and the support she received in school. Two of our families were invited to speak on a symposium with the Bright Network a few years ago, so I think that our students and families are doing a lot of advocacy for the work that, and are very proud of the work that their families have been able to participate in through Bright. We have some very clearly established referral protocols, entrance and exit criteria that we've worked really closely with our administration and guidance counselors to really streamline, so that people in school, including teachers, know what to do if they're the ones that identify a student first. And very often, a teacher or a guidance counselor may know about something before I do or before somebody else does. So having these clear protocols is really helpful, so that we can get students and families connected as soon as possible. So those are highlighted there. And then I think the last thing I put on there was just a few testimonials from some parents and students that we got from our survey last year that I thought really highlighted some of the things that were important to students and families. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know I ran through that quickly, so I hope that was.
Can we add some questions? What's on your mind? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for presenting this tonight.
Oh, my pleasure.
This is an issue that I've been very interested in, and I know that other committee members have also expressed an interest in. It's really great to hear more about the Bright program and to learn the work that you're doing on a daily basis and also just historically, so thank you for doing that. I had a couple of questions, and it's mostly around resources.
Sure.
So you mentioned, or at least in the slide, it says that since 2014, '15, you've enrolled approximately 124 students in Bright. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, on average, I guess it works out to about 30 students or so in any given year? Is that?
Yeah, so the 124 number, there's 36 of them that were readmissions, and so it's actually 88 people. And yeah, it's from between 19 and 30 over the five years have been connected in some capacity.
And are you the only staff person working with these students on a regular basis, or do you have a team?
I do. So I, there's two of us full-time. I'm the social worker, and I have a para educator, and this particular para educator has been with me for three years. She is incredible, and I also have a graduate student intern. So we really make sure that there's always, that room is always staffed. We have students that come before school, students that come for lunch, students that come after school. So, and we also have a private space, so that our Mil U is always running, and then if a student needs a meeting with a teacher, or we have a family meeting, or there's a crisis, we have another place to work with students.
Just a follow-up question. So, but I guess I'm also wondering, you know, do you see a trend or any trends that you could share with the committee? Is this something that is a need increasing? Is it sort of staying stable? Is it decreasing? Like, you know, how does this?
Great question.
Yeah.
So I would say my numbers have increased. Our first year, we had 19, and we're, we have 25, and I have three referrals right now. I would say that the trends I'm seeing are increased anxiety that lead to more extended absences from school, so students feeling paralyzed with these, with these symptoms, and don't have skills or capacity to come in. And so we're, we're seeing a lot more of that. I've had, I think, a pretty stable four, four to six students every year hospitalized for a suicide attempt, so I don't see that number decreasing at all. But I think that the trend that I'm seeing the most concerning to me is how many students with these sort of symptoms just stop coming to school. And so that is why I feel really great about being able to catch some of those students early. So when we're seeing those absentee numbers slowly rise, we wanna get those families in for an intake early, so that we can disrupt these extended absences that lead to the crisis.
Okay, thank you.
Skosensky?
Hi. I was looking through some of your slides, and maybe it kind of dovetails a little bit. I was looking at the referral protocols, and you said you- I was looking at the referral protocols, and you said, there's a, as I read it, there's a cap on the number of students, actually students that you have there, which I assume is so that you can manage it. And my question was, has that cap been an issue? Are we turning people away that we really should be providing some services to?
Yes, we don't ever turn anyone away. And I'm so grateful that we have graduate student intern support, and that partnership has, has increased our capacity. So while that number is still there, because we, we want to be able to manage, and we want to make sure the MLEU feels safe, and that we want to be able to take these students with significant issues, so that's sort of our, our, our bar. But we know, like, right now, we're over that number. But I feel that we're able to do that because we have intern support, and we have just incredible support from our guidance counselors and from other personnel in the building.
Yeah, and I had a, kind of a follow-up on the next slide. You had some of your criteria to accept students. And, you know, one of them is that they're, you know, have had outside services. And I'm just wondering if we are able to reach out and, and make sure we're identifying those students that may not have access, for whatever reason, insurance, family care, transportation, to get those services outside that would trigger you to be engaged here.
Absolutely, and I think this is such an important issue and something that I try to advocate for as much as possible in making sure students do have access. And I think that there are many students that don't, aren't connected, and that's something that we provide support in making sure that they get connected. So whether that's bringing somebody in to do an intake with them, getting them connected over the phone, making sure they know how to get places, really making those links is something that we feel is really, really important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I have two questions. One is, are students, when they enter into Bright, is there, are they typically, how long are they typically involved in the program?
Good question. So it's on an individual basis. And I have some students that, six weeks, and they feel like they're ready to get back to class, and they might just drop in every once in a while. I would say an average student is with me for about a semester, maybe three or four weeks into the semester to support that transition. But I think that the, the criteria for exit really is that they're demonstrating stability in their attendance, their grades, that their symptoms aren't relapsing, and that they do have that source of support within their family and community. So some students we keep a little bit longer, and then we also try to decrease the, the dosage, I would say. So if a student, for example, is coming down every day saying, "Oh, I'm so overwhelmed, and I can't get here for this amount of time," we're really working to them to, to, to rely on us less and to be able to use things more independently or on their own. So maybe now they're just coming down for lunch. Or maybe they're just coming a couple of times a week to check in. Or maybe they're just doing a little, "Hello, I'm doing well, I did great on my test." And that's really what we're, we're trying to do, is, is increase their independence, increase their awareness, and predict when they're going to struggle. And then be available if that happens, that need arises again.
Yeah, so the, the other question I had, I mean, thank you, that's real.
Sure.
The other question I had was, a lot of the coping mechanisms, skills, things that help these, these students who are in some crisis to be able to cope with their stress or whatever circumstances they're in are analogous probably to what other students in the broader population of the community could also benefit from.
Absolutely.
Particularly because the, I mean, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, but this may sound perverse, but like, the bar of entry into your program is, is, is a student who's pretty far along and evidencing significant stress.
Yeah.
And so the natural question for me is, and this is partially just out of curiosity, but then it also could theoretically be a resource-related question, is what do we do to try to extend, inculcate, create experiential opportunities for the broader student body to also get access to some of these skills? And as a related question, which is not sort of related, is I'm assuming we, we have ways that we try to ensure that there's no stigmatization. And, and it seems to me there's a positive relationship between the more all kids are made aware of the positive nature of learning these skills and experiences, the more it takes away any possibility of stigma for those, for those students who need a little bit more assistance in, in adopting them. So I'm just wondering, what, what are we doing?
Yeah, so.
As far as that broader question.
I feel like this is, this is such an important thing that we've been talking about so often recently. And I agree with you. We just talked, just was talking to Dr. Gromacki about promoting and offering some more just general education skills groups next semester, piloting that. We've done that over the past few years, just really trying to recruit students to be able to, to want to participate. We have students coming to us all the time saying, "I'm so anxious, I'm overwhelmed." And then we try to offer these groups, and we must not be doing it at the right time to get their, their buy-in. So we're going to try again this semester and offer some life stress groups. We're going to offer some, some other coping skills groups during just the day for six to eight weeks to try to get more students involved in these things early. We also, last year, the, one of the guidance counselors and I are doing a night, for all the ninth-grade advisories, we're doing a lesson on stress reduction. So helping them identify what the stress response is in their body, giving them more awareness of what's happening for them, as well as introducing them to the idea of some coping strategies. And I'll say that that idea actually came from upper-class students saying, "Why aren't we talking about this stuff earlier? Why aren't you teaching these things to ninth and tenth graders?" So that was excellent. And when I say that to students in the ninth-grade advisory, I think they pay a little bit more attention to me when I say, "This came from your peers," as opposed to a bunch of adults saying, "You need to learn some stress response strategies." So that is something that's going, I think, pretty well for the second year. And I think the other, the other thing that you talked about in terms of stigma, my, the students in Bright talk about this all the time. And I have worked in four different school districts in, in my career, and I have been so proud of the students and the teachers here who really have welcomed the, the Bright program and just the, the need for something like this. I've, we give students this laminated pink pass where, so they can walk out of the room without having to say, "I'm having a panic attack, can I please go to the Bright room?" So they can slide this or just show this to their teacher and sort of walk out. The amount of students that I, that I have talked to who aren't in Bright say, "Oh yeah, my friend goes to Bright, that, that's cool," you know, or "I'm going to walk them down there." It just feels very supportive, and there's more we can do. There's more we can, there's more we can educate people about students and families and teachers. And I feel like that's something that's a real priority for us to continue doing. I have students that, that refer their friends to say, "I think my student could, my friend could really benefit from talking to you, but she's not in a crisis yet." And so I think that that, that's, that's really a promising sign to me, that students are supportive. I don't, I have students whose friends come by to say hello. Students don't feel like, "Oh, I'm in that room, and I can't go there." So that, that, those are such positive signs for me, and I think there's more we can do. One of my students a few years ago wrote an article in The Graphic about her experience in the Bright program, and we should share it because it was, it was a lovely article. And I was really touched that she wanted to share her personal story with the whole school community.
So yeah, so thank you very much. As soon as I think I know everything that's amazing that's offered at our high school for so many, so many things, you know, it's another amazing program.
Thank you, that means a lot.
Thank you for talking about this. So, you know, I was really intrigued by this theme Mr. Nakajima's bringing up about how, you know, that, just the idea of being overwhelmed at some point and having some level of anxiety is such a universal experience. And that anxiety is such a spectrum of intensity and, and even per individual, even per individual, per, per day or week, and how this is such a universal thing. And, and, and there is some, some emerging talk in educational literature in the, in the, in recent years about how just in general anxiety is increasing for students. And so I love the idea of, you're talking about piloting these coping mechanisms, talking in ninth-grade advisories.
Yeah.
And maybe this is more of a question for Dr. Morris or Dr. Gromacki, but I'm wondering about, you know, what, what could we potentially incorporate into our standard health curriculum? When you talk about health, you know, what was health for me, you know, back decades ago is probably fundamentally different than what we could be offering today. And so I'm wondering if, just as part of, you know, right next to sex ed and all the other, you know, juicy topics that are in a health curriculum, you know, let's talk about anxiety, because it's a necessary skill. And if we don't explicitly teach it, then we're just assuming that students have it.
I can, I can say one thing. We, I talked a little bit about DBT, the Dialectical Behavior Therapy, and it has that, those four pillars. We've been very interested in bringing this more to the mainstream, just the general high school environment. Jamie Knox, the social worker from Summit Academy, and I did a workshop on DBT skills for teachers this year. We got some really good feedback, and I think that in part is leading us to bring, Dr. Brady is bringing some folks in to do DBT training with many of the high school personnel who work with students in February. We're going to do two sessions on it. And I think the idea really is, how do we, exactly what you're saying, how do we incorporate this more across the board, in the guidance office, in the nurse's office, in the AAC, in the library, everywhere, so that we're really bringing awareness to this? So it doesn't take a crisis to be able to learn these skills. So I think we're very excited about what, what this is going to bring to us.
I think I'll just add quickly that Dr. Gromacki and I and Mr. Sheen actually had an interesting conversation with someone who works in a lot of schools around, you know, issues around well-being, just yesterday, actually, it feels like a while ago. And one of the things they noted in their work, and particularly in high schools, is an increase in anxiety, you know, across the board. And one of the best interventions that can happen is actually just raising the topic and helping both staff and students and families understand that this is occurring, right? There's a lot of, like, steps after it, but one of the things that, what, what's getting noted is that, well, this is going on and talked about in loose ways. It actually doesn't get to the place where people act, the voices of students actually come to the forefront of explaining what their experience is actually like. There was, at a high school in Western Massachusetts, Mr. Mangano shared it with me earlier, where there was a valedictory speech last year that was basically saying this very thing, that we need to actually start talking about this and, and the whole perfection kind of as the goal of perfection and getting into ex, right? All those things are having a significant life impact on our young people. So I think more to come on that question. I appreciate that answer, but it's something that Dr. Gromacki and I and others are actively thinking about working on. But it's interesting that the, kind of just raising the topic, whether it's through survey, person-to-person interaction, or both, which is the ideal, is itself an intervention of, of highlighting how students are actually feeling. Because there, there can still be some methodology of like, "Oh, well, you know, it's a competitive world." Right, you can, you can imagine a lot of sort of cliches that get thrown out around it, and, you know, what our students are telling us is a very different story.
I also just, I, I completely agree with that, Dr. Morris. And I would also say that, and I had mentioned this, I think, in one of our last meetings. For me, the interest in maintaining a focus on well-being generally among the student population is multifaceted, you know, not least of which, you know, some of the unfortunate acts of violence that we've seen committed in, in schools, but also just a lot of students, you know, inflicting self-harm, a lot of the drug abuse that we've seen, you know, all of it is connected. And so I think the more opportunities that we have as a district to be able to pay attention to what's happening to our kids on a daily basis and to provide support and taking, you know, take care of them when they meet us, the better off we all are as a community and just as a future generation. So I'm also really heartened to, to, you know, again, hear about this program, learn what's going on, and hopefully find ways to strengthen and support it.
Thank you.
So I'm going to throw a question out that may not be able to be answered tonight.
Sure.
I know we need to move forward. But you mentioned that there was talk about extending this program or adopting it at the middle school level, which begs the question, because it's like middle school. I think we had, we were talking casually a few weeks ago about how like, middle school can actually often be the most intensely challenging period for a kid emotionally, even though high school has its own challenges that are pretty significant as well. What are, if we're not doing this at that age, I'm curious as to what we are doing. If we need to do this at that age, what are the gating, what are, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
So I'm not really going to ask a question, I'm going to throw that little thing at you.
Sure.
And you can answer it tonight or tell me, let's deal with it in a future meeting.
I think I'll do the latter.
But let's do that, because to be honest, I also think, I mean, because obviously what you're doing is very impressive. And I'm, I think we're all, the committee has expressed their deep appreciation.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, it's wonderful. But I, I also think, though, that if we're going to have a full secondary conversation about this, then we got to dig in a little bit on the middle school.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Karen. Then I think our next, okay.
I'm looking intense because I'm, I'm teeing you up.
Okay, sure.
For a really good, a really productive and a really engaged conversation, right?
That's what we're going to.
Restorative practices?
Yeah, we're going to do restorative practices, and I think we're going to literally move to a different space so we get to experience. For those who haven't been in circle, and our, we're going to have student leaders who are going to lead us. But before we do that, I just want to, she walked away to get them right up, but I just want to introduce the committee to Evelyn Aquino. So Evelyn's back there, you can just wave, there's Evelyn. So Evelyn has supported the high school program since its inception. She's been working with DW, and then as recently as today, maybe? Was it today? Today was Evelyn's first day as the climate coordinator that we spoke about in a prior meeting at the middle school. So that application process ended, and we're thrilled to have her on board in a more formal role.
Congratulations.
Middle school, so. And I think Evelyn would like us to join the students on the couches, right?
Okay, so I'm going to start by reading one of the, okay, my name is Petua. I'm a sophomore at this school. And I'm going to start by reading a journal that one of the students in our class, her name's Rachida, she's a junior. She wrote on the eleventh a couple of days ago, and so yeah. When I'm asked to, when I'm asked what impact the restorative justice program had on me, honestly, my mind draws to a blank. Not because of the lack of information, but because it simply is too much to organize into a clear-cut explanation. So I'll just start with the facts. Every other G-period, I go to our RJ room, not DW's room, not the next, the room next to the AAC, not the, not the plain old, plain old room one thirty-five, I go to our RJ room. We sit down in a circle like we are today, and we see each other's faces, feeling the energy flow through the room, and do check, check-ins. Normally, we check in to unleash everything that we have suppressed all day in every other class that we go to. And so that way, we're in a clean state for new information to come in some, in, in. Some days, we receive a lesson from Ms. Evelyn, or if we're lucky to have a chance from Ms. DW, who's out with an injury right now. A new piece of restorative justice is learned. Another piece to grow our confidence and our knowledge in the experience of restorative justice is done every day. We normally check out, and sometimes if we don't have time, we do one-word checkouts. Here are some of the most common words used. Peaceful, mindful, excited, hopeful, calm, refreshed, and hungry, hungry for more. I have been talking, taking this class for five months now, and here is my overall experience with it. Change is slow, especially self-change. You get used to yourself that other people notice the change for you, which allows you to acknowledge it. From learning power structures, cycles of oppression, and his, and the history of racism, I have unknowingly grown so much. Three months into the program, my friend, my friend noticed how articulate I became and how neutralized I could stay. In a conflict between my two friends, I found myself, I found myself understanding the importance of restorative justice in all situations. All of this from simply learning and from participating in the circle process. The other day, during a discussion during, about, during the Saga Club, which is the Sexuality and Gender Alliance, I found myself ranting about the motivations behind hate, like racism and homophobia. I found myself embodying circle and circle elements in my life outside the restorative justice room. I advised people to think, to think about why others think and behave the certain ways they do. And simply preaching at them will never promote, provoke any change. After the meeting, my friend told me that she has seen me change mentally so much since the starting, the start of the class, even if I don't recognize it myself. My other friend chimed in and said that my words represented and showed so much knowledge that they have never heard or thought of it before. That is why. That is why restorative justice is so important. It provokes the slow but necessary change in people to really understand each other and recognize each other's humanity. I think twice about every situation and the people involved. We need this restorative justice class to spread the philosophy, this philosophy, this exciting and necessary philosophy. It is not just a class, it's an experience.
So I'm also going to follow up with the reading of one of our coworkers in this class, but I also want to say like my personal experience with RJ following after it, but so.
You are, introduce yourself.
Sorry, I'm jumping the gun a little bit. I'm Brendan. I am a sophomore, just like Petua. You might have noted and not noticed because, you know, I look a little bit older than I am. I am a sophomore. So through RJ, I knew for a fact that I changed on how I viewed the world and dealing with people around me. I learned to pay more close attention to how I speak and what others feel. Also, through Circle Process, I became more comfortable opening up about myself. Before, I am pretty extrovert, so I feel okay with people, but I usually understand, I usually listened, but now I pay attention to myself as well as listening, just like I learned to respect others more. If students at schools are exposed to the program, I am certain that there will be growth and change in hearts. And I do deeply agree with David when this, like, when he said that, because RJ for me has given me a place where like I feel open to like share what I want to share, but also hear others out. And like the main theme of RJ is to really like let everyone be heard, no matter how like uncensored they are saying, like, we want to understand where they're coming from and then be able to share what you're coming from. And so not to like argue, but more so to know why like you're in that kind of mood or situation. And for me, it's really given me that because when like I'm in a circle like this, I really get the opportunity to like just look at everyone and see them as like a person and know that whatever I'm going to say next is going to affect them on like three different levels, instead of just seeing them through like a glass or like as a higher authority and feeling like afraid to say something because they have more power in a certain, in that situation. It gives us like an equal standpoint for everyone to like, you know, just feel comfortable with what they have to say. And that just like makes it a whole lot better for me to want to say things and then apply that kind of humanitarian like treatment of other people in like any situation and be able to like kind of break that kind of power scaling or just power complexion between everyone like I see.
Yes, good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Omar and I am an actual senior here in the High School in Amherst. As my partners and classmates shared, in the restorative justice, we have learned how to be more in connection as a community and in a connection more of like as a human being rather than just seeing one person as a speaker and just letting their words go away as we mostly often do. I always say that at the beginning, we didn't know how it was going to work out because it was a new program for us and also for the school. But at the same time, while we kept like going on throughout the different classes and sessions, we became more close within, within each other and we became more confident within ourselves and also within, within the community. And that really allowed us to open up and understand more how are we feeling and how will other people be feeling with whatever you had to say as an opinion or as a statement. As a community that we are, you really get to feel really confident and able to share whatever you're feeling at any moment. And that, that really feels different because you, you don't often have that opportunity to have a space where you can share what are you feeling towards a specific situation or how are you feeling about yourself or how can you approach a community situation such as something that's going on in school that might be wrong, but others like can't speak about it. So being able to speak about specifics really makes you see how importantly it is for us to be in connection as a community rather than just anybody walking down the street like, oh, I know you, but I don't care and I see you and I don't want to like talk to you whatsoever. And throughout the, the months that we've been in the, in the restorative justice courses, I have really became more confident of, of myself on how to talk about what I'm thinking, what I'm feeling towards a situation and how to understand why I'm feeling like that and how will others get it and understand my approach within it. And I really consider that without it, I don't know if my year will, will have felt the same way as, 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 as how it feels right now, because last year as a junior, I was like, yeah, whatever, let's get college stuff done and let's just like keep the friendships that I have and whatsoever. But right now is when I realize that thank you to myself and also thank you to the restorative justice structure and all the learning that we've gotten from it. I can personally say that when you're more closer to who you have to see every day, you can actually be able to work better rather than just being like, oh, yeah, let's just do this, but I'm not really confident to talk about whatever I'm feeling. And that's like an obstacle in between allowing you to be able to move forward in better in any kind of situation. So it has been really, really interesting and really, really special being able to learn a lot about a different system and a different program to be more connected in a community rather than just being a single person and moving on.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie and I'm a sophomore and I'm just going to read my thoughts. Last year, my advisor came up to me and she told me about an Alps class that is being offered to take next year. When I learned that this course would teach me how to be a leader and make a difference in my community, I got excited. My excitement hadn't faded since. Every day, I walk into a classroom filled with people I trust and I also come as myself. I walk into a classroom without judgment. I am not seen as another grade. I am seen as a person and I have learned to see others as people and honor their humanity. Everyone has a story and after listening to my classmates' stories, I can see how restorative justice is a practice that our schools and community need. Restorative justice class has opened my eyes and exposed me to so many new ideas. I learned about Circle Process and how to solve conflicts and build and repair relationships. I feel as if people, especially teachers, are starting to be inspired and interested in this. During a training workshop with teachers, I felt a shift in things start. I felt like for once, teachers didn't see me as just another student in their class. I was seen as a person with the need to make a change and help our community grow. I feel like I finally had a voice and I know that other young people like me also have voices that need to be heard. We need more classes like this so people learn that they are valued in this community. This class has taught me so much and made me realize the flaws and problems in our school. All the unfairness in school and the non-helpful punishments were exposed. It really helps to know that there are teachers that support this class and want to see a change as well. There's still so much more I feel I need to learn and this is just the beginning. There needs to be a change and growth in our schools and it starts here with us, because if people can't change, nothing will.
Hi, my name's Mosiah. I am a junior and my classmates here more just talked about how the class goes, but I actually went through Circle Process with Miss DW last year as a sophomore, because in my AAC class, I, I met Miss DW one day and we asked her what she did in the school, like me and my classmates, and she basically just set up a circle and then every Friday from there on, we just held a circle at the end of the day in G-period AAC in the room that is now our RJ room. So I'm, we're going to talk about the circle experience and RJ and how it's kind of influenced me personally. Pretty much my whole school career, I would say I wasn't a troublemaker, but I didn't exactly help the flow of the class go by well either. I would distract students and I wasn't exactly interested in listening to anything teachers had to say to me if it wasn't already what I was thinking. And so that didn't really help me very much, but I wasn't trying to change it either because that's kind of how I liked it. But after going through circles and kind of meeting the people in my class for a real honest first time, I would say, it definitely, it deep, well, first it deepened all my relationships with everyone in the class and kind of going into the class felt like even though it was just an AAC class when it wasn't Friday, it still felt like I could see people in the hallways or if I needed, I could pull someone aside from the circle, just like in class and talk to them. And I felt like they really heard me and they understood how to hear and interact with me in a way that would kind of help everybody. And I would definitely say that I've probably changed a lot. My parents and my family, they noticed last year, my friends noticed this year, and I would just say it just keeps on going and going and going. And just kind of, I don't think there's any negative way you can be influenced by this because being able to kind of understand yourself, especially at this age or in middle school, is, I think it's incredibly important and it could help in so many different ways. And the first part of RJ is to understand yourself and then using yourself and others to help others. So I would definitely say that how RJ is now is amazing, but it can only get better. And being allowed to increase its use throughout the school, throughout the community, is just going to really bring the community together and it can help kind of prevent so many different things. There've been lots of like fights in the school recently, more than I've ever seen before. My freshman year, there was one fight, it's been four in like the last like two months. And so I would say that now more than ever, I think it's an incredibly important time to implement the tools that we use in RJ and implement all the teachings that we get. And even though it's unfortunate that Miss DW hasn't been able to be here, because she's an amazing just person, amazing everything, I can't say anything better about her, but just amazing. And, but Miss Evelyn has actually helped us a ton as well and they've both been just great, a ton of support in every just kind of facet of our lives, anything you need, I just know I can talk to them. And I feel even, even like right now, I would say that I can still, whenever I get like nervous or anything, if I see any of them in the hallway, I just like instantly can feel better, can just kind of like lock eyes, see each other, know like, oh, okay, I see you, or if you can tell something's wrong, we know, okay, well, I'll know to bring that up in RJ and kind of just help everybody's life go by easier. And, yeah, I would just say that RJ and Circle Process has been just truly amazing and I would say that the increase in use or the prolonged use of this will just mend the small rifts that are kind of opening up throughout the community and just bring it to a solid and like stable place.
I would like to connect to what Mosiah just shared about and add a little bit something else. As he said, there's been a lot of situations going on in school lately and we've learned in restorative justice that, restorative justice is a program or a system to help you understand why you are in a certain situation and why that situation went off. And we have been thinking and like analyzing, how can we help with what we've learned in RJC towards the situations that are going on in the school community? And it is, it is how we say, since we know that restorative justice is a way to restore and like go far beyond from just like, oh, there was this fight, let's suspend both of the people and let's wait until they come back and hopefully nothing else will happen. It is more of like going in, going deeper and trying to analyze more, more and better why both sides were in a disagreement and see what can we do as a human being and as a community to help them alleviate that if they can and if they want, and also understand why were they feeling like that. And as human beings, we know that we all have, we all commit mistakes a lot of times. And I really feel that being part of RJC has empowered that, the knowledge of knowing more about that you as a human being cannot be perfect and that situations happen. And as I always say, everything has a reason behind it. And restorative justice has teach us a lot about how that differentiates from just like suspending somebody or just like, oh, you don't like me, I'm not going to like you anymore. No, it has teach us about going further and knowing why is that happening and understanding it better. And I really consider that it is really special being able to know all of that rather than just like having all of that kind of feelings and not being able to like express them out and understand them at all. And I am pretty sure that my partners agree on that as well, so, yeah.
Um, before we go into questions, I want to, um, so my English, for my English class, we had to write a speech about something we would like, like to change in the world and for mine, I would like to, for my speech, I did it about restorative justice and how that should be implemented in schools and like the criminal justice system and like society in general. And for schools specifically, I was thinking about my middle school experience and I was a very quiet, I'm still a very quiet person who doesn't like to rock the bow on anything or like disturb class, like I'm like the opposite of Mosiah. I like, I, I'm there to get the class, get the A and get out and that's what I want to do. And when I was in middle school, I was have, in a English class and there, there were kids that would talk out and like make comments that were funny and would distract the class, but they were like, it was, there were comments that happened because things happen. And the teacher would discipline the kids with the students of color more often than the kids, students that weren't, that white students or white males especially, they would be able to talk and the teacher would laugh along with the student and it didn't sit well with me, but because I didn't want to rock the bow, I didn't say anything. And so in my speech, I talked about the school-to-prison pipeline, which I think is important to understand the restorative justice work. And the school-to-prison pipeline, if you're not familiar to that, it's like, it's just a concept, I think is the best way to put it, as how students of color or minority groups, it doesn't even have to be like students of color, it can be like LGBTQ communities. I did a lot of research on this, but it's all lost right now. And they all, they're more likely to be suspended and put into disciplinary positions than their white peers or their other peers who do the same things that they do at the same rates, but they're disciplined more. And when you're put into suspensions, you're more likely to end up in prison. And if you're in, in prison, it's not a good place, so you don't want to end up there. But if you're more likely to be ending up there, it's not fair. And so we need to change the system, how we do get to there, how do we avoid getting there, and restorative justice is the way to do that. And so when I think back to my middle school years, I think about how I felt even, like I didn't get sent to the QLC, which is where the kids who got disciplined would go, they would go to the Quiet Learning Center where they would just sit there. They weren't allowed to do their work apparently. Some, one of the students in my cla, in our class who left unfortunately, his name was Keme, he was in that, he got sent to the QLC often when he was in middle school and he wasn't even allowed to do work, he was just had to sit there and like think about what Sit there and like think about what he did, but he wasn't even told what he was supposed to think about, so. He doesn't know what he needs to do to be a better student unless he does exactly what the people's, the authority people say. And you don't wanna do that because, I mean, you're a teen, you're the you're rebelling, but also you don't understand. And no one's telling you how to understand and so you're more likely to end up in the QLC and then the school to prison pipeline is gonna happen again. So and for me who wasn't in there, just to see kids of color, especially black um boys being sent out again and again. It like took a toll on me, like why is that happening or it's like, is that supposed to be happening and then you start to rethink things and I'm not allowed like. It's not like I'm not allowed to talk about it, but I don't feel empowered to talk about these kinda things to my teachers, to my peers, to. Anyone really and so um restorative justice has let me like think about that and come to conclusions myself and then. The answer is restorative justice, so it's like a loop and it's like, so we need restorative justice in conclusion. Um but like then I'm like, I also take all honors classes and in my classes, I'm sometimes the only uh black female in my class. Sometimes uh there're only like a couple other students of color in those higher classes and. Higher classes set you up to do higher sets of work for your higher levels of learning. And if you aren't set up to do that in the system that we live in, cause we live in a lot of systems and if we set ourselves up to succeed. Will be able to succeed, but if we set kids up to fail, then what, how do we accept expect them to succeed? And I think if you, if we were to talk to those kids in the QLC who were there in the middle school. Before they even got to the high school, if we were to talk to them in a circle like this and let them share their stories. Let them understand what they need to know and how they would um. Ex- like how they can make changes into their own life, like every one of the students here have. Like how cha- make changes and be better students, then they might have been able to take higher classes. In um the high school, cause it's not even just about their learning, like their educational things, like their personal selves. And like with the bright presentation, they're like, how do we prevent people from ending up into these places where they're like suicidal or missing school? Or in or even if it's like a mental uh illness, they have. An opportunity to just talk and share about everything they, e- everything they're willing to share. And being able to trust the people in the room around them, I think that's so important and I think it's so necessary. And I I'm I'm very thankful that I'm able to be in a room where I can share with multiple people and yeah. So I think that's, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, yeah.
Please.
Uh going back on to what you said, I was one of those kids who got sent to the QLC a lot. I probably got sent to the QLC in like at least every other class, I would probably go to the QLC three, maybe like four times a day. And I had like six classes, but it wasn't for really getting in trouble more, it wasn't like real disciplinary actions. It was more just that I didn't wanna sit in my class and just listen to them talk and so I would talk back and then they didn't really want that either. And I would definitely say that when I was in middle school, I did not feel heard because once you go to the QLC. Nobody wants to ask you about going to the QLC, cause now you lost credibility for being a honest student, cause you're going to the QLC all the time. So then nobody really sees what happens in the QLC, cause they only ask the students that don't go to the QLC. Or they just ask the teachers who are in the QLC who don't really always feel like there needs to be a change. And so I would definitely say that also continuing with the um. Honors and not really being able to get into higher classes, I definitely would say that now I'm in. All honors classes as a junior, but every year since like seventh grade. I've just been told and like recommended to not take honors classes, whenever I asked, should I take this as an honors class? It was always by guidance counselor or by a teacher, like, I don't know, I'm not sure if you could. Because I was getting in trouble all the time and missing class and so I believed that for a while. But I would definitely say that it robbed me of great learning experiences and this year. It was actually Ms. DW who told me that I wo- I should do the honors classes because she believed that I was capable of keeping up with the work. And I would say that now I went from kind of disliking school and feeling bored in all my classes. To getting excited to go to a lot of my classes, my favorite class is my history class, I love going to history class. Even though it's one of my hardest classes, I just love all the information I gain from it and that's an experience that I'd never had previously in school. I always thought in school that like I was basically going to school to do my thing and I'd leave and I'd figure out whatever I was gonna do after school. In life and I was just gonna figure it out and in ninth grade, I was actually very close to dropping out of school and I almost dropped out of school. For good and I was basically just planning on waiting until I could work and then just working and I was just gonna. Work, save up money and help my siblings go to college instead because all my life, I'd basically just been told like. Eh you're like a solid B C student, but you're always getting in trouble, I don't know if you can do any better than how you're doing now. Wait till you get As and then go up and so I never did any better and so. I would definitely say that, yeah, considering Ms. DW, all the RJ people, all the people who understand restorative justice. Just increases because each time you kind of touch one person with a little bit of information of the like RJ information. They then wanna learn a bit more and then once you learn more, they wanna give it to someone else because you remember the experience of not having it, feeling lost. And now you feel in a place where you can explain to others how to find themselves too.
I would like to share about um me being new-ish in this community. Since uh my family moved here from Puerto Rico in twenty sixteen. Um I didn't go to middle school here, but my sister goes to the middle school right now. And I always talk to her about how she feels in school and she only says, my grades are perfect, but the staff. Sometimes doesn't make me feel like it and I ask her why she feels that way and she says. Well, even though I get good grades and I always do my job, sometimes I feel that some teachers have a lot of bias. Uh in their like life or whatsoever and they don't listen to what I'm actually projecting. And I don't feel confident or comfortable with that happening. And me personally, listening to my little sister say that and see how much. Si- she knows already about bias and stuff like that really touches me and I'm like. I would really love to do something to help that change and like. Help people to be more open and more connected, rather than just being one person and one person and there's a wall in between of like. Uh confidence or bias or restrictions and it it is, it is really, really interesting having a. A little sister that's been through a a different system than what I went to school in Puerto Rico and. She she always shares how she feels with me and I appreciate that because. It it is important, I think, to know how different like schools and like different systems work. And how different people feel about it and since I didn't experience middle school or elementary school here, I find it really, really special.
So this um I feel personally uh honored for you having come and shared your experience. With the program and I think also given the stories you've shared. I think there's also a lot of courage in putting together your ideas and thoughts and being willing to come to do that. Um I think you already knew that this was actually being filmed and um. I I a couple of years ago had this startling experience of being like in Stop and Shop or something or Big Y and having somebody walk up who I don't know. And be like, oh, I saw you on TV the other day on the school committee and they'll make some sort of comment to me and so the rea- I say that only because. Um I hope you'll be happy to know that there are actually an awful lot of our neighbors who are gonna watch this. And are gonna hear your stories and some of them to me are about the restorative justice program. And circles and the value that's been created by doing this. And then some of them are also your own stories and then some of them are also about as at the beat of drum on this, we talked about this a moment ago. Um uh the middle school too and thinking about holistically, um how do we improve your experience, your sister's experience? Uh how do we keep act doing that, so I I I'm just really, I'm saying this also because I know that we. Both out of respect for your time as well as all for the committee's time, we don't have a lot of time for questions and I just wanted to say clearly that. Uh eh I'm glad you came, but I think also the committee is honored by your presence and by your experience that you've shared.
I appreciate it.
So I just uh wanted to also say thank you to all of you for coming, um there's a comment that I think um. You made earlier about not feeling like you were good enough or that you could succeed. And I just wanna say how incredibly impressed I am by all of you, um you are so articulate and so thoughtful. And are able to express yourselves in ways that quite honestly, people two, three times your age can't do. But also about such sensitive topics, right, and to be able to bring that out to, you know, a group of of middle aged adults who are learning about. Some of whom are learning about this for the first time. But also, you know, um need to hear this, right, and this is, this is so critically important. And uh I noticed when I first came into the building earlier, I got here a little earlier before the meeting, that there were a couple of books about restorative justice. Here in the library, um and I know those aren't the only two that are here. Um this is definitely a a wave that's been sort of taking over and I hope spreads to other communities. But I'm so proud of of us for doing this and so proud for all of you for being, you know, the leaders. In getting this program up and running and, you know, forging a new path forward. And hopefully we can find a way to continue this program, expand it, as uh Mr. Nakajima said, you know, to the middle school and elsewhere because. I'm convinced this is critically important, just hearing your personal stories and the stories that you shared of your other classmates. Um it's really, really powerful, so thank you.
I mean, one of the um, I mean, there's, we have multiple topics that we talk about around. Social justice, but also just supporting all of the students in our in our community and one of the things we've talked about is. Um how do we help improve access, utilization, enjoyment, benefit of honors and AP courses? And so one of the things that as we're moving, as as we as a committee, as we sort of like an. As an adult public face of talking about this kinda stuff, as we continue on it, I can't think of anything more valuable. Than the kind of reflections that and experiences you're offering because um. It's it, I've al- when we've talked about this stuff before, I've always feel like it's, everything's put in a little box and you just deal with it in a little box. And yet that life's not like that, you can be in seventh grade and what happens to you in seventh grade could profoundly affect what you choose, what you're both in a position to do. But also internally, how you feel about taking advantage of opportunities when you're in eleventh grade. And that's just the complexity of things, it's even like we were talking earlier about the bright program, you were mentioning the fact that their students are benefiting from it. They're benefiting from restorative justice and in some ways you can see kind of as a full community. Um interlap and and interconnecting ways in which we can improve the quality of our community in ways that are gonna benefit us throughout. In many, multiple ways, the point is multiple ways and so I hope uh as we're thinking about this, cause I think the committee. And if we're gonna talk about this a little bit, at least in the past, the school committee's been deeply committed to supporting restorative justice, but also. Exploring ways in which we can really embrace a common agenda of advancing all students, supporting all students. In a very individual way, it sounds grandiose, but we're talking about all of you, your sister, everyone. Um and I don't know how we can do it, but I still think that whether it's you specifically or whether it's your colleagues and classmates. In the future, um we should continue to hear from you because that's the only way we're gonna get the feedback we need. To be able to have conversations around what makes for effective practice and how do we do better job. Doctor Morris?
Yeah, I'll just be brief, so uh I'm not gonna repeat the comments, although I agree with them from other from committee members. Um such as three quick things, one is sort of a personal note, the two of you I've known since you were in first grade and something like that. And so it's just very affirming um to see the um the adults are becoming. So I know that's true for all of you, but since I've known some of you since you were six years old, it feels a little bit different, so I wanna acknowledge that that's, this is a needed.
Were they this articulate when they were said?
Pedro, what do you think? But but I but I do, it is amazing to see, you know, that growth um and um. So I just wanna note that, cause I can't not do that. The second is I just wanna thank Ms. Aquino, um right, so these students are here and involved in this, because of the work that's ongoing. I wanna thank Emerson Education Foundation, which supported a grant that made this uh this particular focus more possible. So when we talk about grants and we talk about the community supporting our schools, sometimes it's the conversations we have and sometimes it's our community partners who do that. And I think the last thing I wanna say that was most impressive to me is that from my perspective, restorative justice is about empowerment and so. I think there were a number of students coming on videotape, as Mr. Nakajima noted. Uh who are able to share some very deeply personal stor- experience about themselves, about their family, about. Uh how they've experienced the the school district in the past, how they experience it now and for me, that's, the proof is in the pudding that people, that students feel empowered. Um to talk about and no one, I don't know if anyone used that word, but I felt like every single one of you who spoke. Talked in some way about feeling empowered and that you were able to advocate for yourselves and also for your community and how impressive that was for me to hear and so. Uh even though it wasn't explicit, my take home from today, my, one of my big take homes is that we have students who are willing and able to be leaders. Uh on this issue and have developed a skill set that's not just supported with themselves as learners and students, but actually supported with the larger community.
In in this sense, in my piercing, but the rest of you aren't. Um consider this an invitation to come back if you want to, so talk amongst yourselves with DW, Evelyn. Um if you want to, you can come back next year and continue to share your thoughts and ideas and experiences. And if you don't wanna come back, that's okay, do not have to tell us. We won't be insulted, but I mean really seriously, you know, this is extremely valuable for us, it's extremely valuable for us. So we really appreciate it.
And can I just say that, you know, RJ is really a place where we ask less questions and try to understand more answers. So you, you could quote that if you want.
Um I also wanna add that we have a newsletter, me and Mackenzie, we have a newsletter for this class, so if you. I d- I think it's already shared with um most of the people in the committee and anyone else in this room, if you want information, I think we could give that to you. And that newsle- letter is like bi-monthly, so it will show the growth of the program in this year and hopefully years to come. And I think if you also have questions, you could also send it to Ms. Evelyn, I don't know if we have contact information with you guys, but to Ms. Evelyn. And Ms. DW, email questions to her or contact them and then we could answer them in the newsletter and then you could get more info if you want more of that and. Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
You so much.
So I'm gonna pick Nancy for now, okay?
Ms. Spitzer?
Takes a second to pick up, so now yes.
Ms. Spitzer?
Hi, here.
Hi, great, I'm very glad you can join us again.
Yes, thank you.
I you'll you'll, it'll be available on tape at some point, but in all honesty and sincerity, you missed one heck of a circle. Um on restorative practices, it was uh very moving, very worth catching up on in a big way. Um but luckily you have not missed um item number three in our uh. Our wonderful triumvirate, it's promiscuous, you'll think you wanna say something.
I do, so I think um we'll just need to announce that one of our members is participating remotely publicly and make sure that everyone does that whole thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to do all our votes by uh roll call.
Right.
Um we're not in executive session, so we don't have to do all the rigmarole of, are you in a private location where no one else can hear you? Um but yes, we have a me- we have a member participating via phone. Do you say anything about?
I do, um so welcome to John Bechtold, uh he's come before, um we're happy to have him back, I think. Telling that during some of the uh other parts of the meeting, he just went and did more work down the hallway. Uh yet John is here often, he is known by custodians early and late. Um and we're deeply appreciative and being more serious of his deep work with students. Um you know, we've we've talked about some of the theater performances before, uh you came and shared a bit earlier this year and we appreciate. Um the update that you're about to offer us about the performing arts program and how many students are served and and the ways in which they're served, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, um and I agree, I don't, I don't think there's any. Thank you. And I agree, I don't think there's any, you know, second act after the restorative justice circle. That was really incredible stuff. But I was glad that I also got to attend to that and also hear a little bit of Karen's presentation, because I think there is a through line across these three programs tonight. And one of the themes that I hear a lot and also during the school days, this very important need for students to not only feel like they go to a school that feels safe and supportive of them, but they have a home within that school and that they have, whether that's a physical home base of some kind or a sense of emotional space that's really theirs. That increasingly, I would say, is something that we see a lot of our students needing and wanting. And we hope, for our part in the performing arts, that we can be part of that equation as well. So, I've prepared just a couple of slides. They're intended as an overview. I kind of took some shots in the dark about things that might be of value to hear, but I'll try to keep it short so that if there are questions, I can tend to those more directly. So, this kind of a current state of affairs, the current slide that's up. We currently, in the high school program for the performing arts, have five separate programs, band, chorus, dance, orchestra, and theater. They subdivide even further out, so we get down to a total of 10, what we'll call performing ensembles. These are groups that have concert series or performances in some ways. These are all curricular groups that go out and perform at least once or more a year. And then, in addition to that, we also have seven different elective offerings for students as well. We would call those maybe closer to classroom classes. So, that's the overall offering at present. That doesn't speak to the number of sections of those classes or anything, just the titles themselves. As far as current enrollment, this school year, across the both semesters, we have 331 students currently enrolled. So, roughly a third of the school will take a performing arts class at some point this year. Fifty-six percent of those students are in what we'll call entry-level classes. I would define those as any class that does not require prerequisite. So, you can walk in or sign up from day one. Many of those classes, which is another wonderful distinction in a lot of ways for us, are grades nine through 12 classes, or at least 10 through 12. So, there's a nice, wonderful mix of students across grades. And we find that that is a robust part of what we get to do, is bring students together that might not see each other in the school otherwise. And then, finally, we have across the night of those performances, 27, I just read it on the calendar, different concerts or productions scheduled across this school year. Those are 27 distinct performances, again, not like, say, there's like the Larnery Project that ran for three nights, that's just kind of is one in that case, to give a picture for that. So, very hardworking students and a wonderful group of colleagues and staff to help run these programs. Second slide and last slide. Just kind of things on either ends of it. Recent additions or changes in our program, many of which you know, but are kind of some signatures for us right now. In the past couple of years, we have added two new high school courses, one very recently. Both of those are going to be added to that, no prerequisite required. We really want to find in high school more ways for students to have an on-ramp into our work. So, all of our recent class offerings and the current curriculum have been focused on how can we create a more open door for more students to find us, even though it's high school and many students have had training by that point or maybe a dedication, we don't want to cater only to those students. We want to be able to create more options. Second, we started last year, started a program for dance at the middle school for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, what a wonderful place to be able to find kinetic space and explore that in a meaningful way than when you're a middle schooler. But then also, we want the dance program to line up more with what we get to do, especially in the music program and to some degree, the theater program, in making course offerings that have this long line, grade seven through 12, gets the students sooner so that we have more chance for more impact with them and help them really run through. Some new equipment with many things, especially to the AEF. Most notably, the digital music lab and the stage lighting console that have recently come into play have supported this work. We're currently working with Sean and the business office to replace some much-needed, this sounds really mundane, but stage and choral risers that have been around for decades and are starting to, you know, border on not usable any longer. But we consider that's almost part of our infrastructure when we get into our concert and performance season. And then, finally, instrument purchases. There have been several strong efforts with much support from the administration to replace old equipment as well. Our anticipated challenges and needs on the front end, certainly, this is not an exhaustive list. But some key things that we're looking at right now, we're going to have to continue to replace musical instruments and replace things that are just breaking down simply from their age and well-used time. We are looking to find a way to add some more music production computer stations for that music production class, especially as we find more student interest building there. We certainly have, one chance we have space-wise is storage for theater equipment, props, building and painting materials. Right now, the AHS stage is also our scene shop and our prop storage and our lumber storage and our paint storage. And we do really well with what we got, to be sure. But I think it's also safe to say that the auditorium is showing signs of wear and tear from those experiences, which leads me to the last one. The HS, the high school auditorium upkeep is still something that we can wrangle. It gets more challenging every year as we figure out how to make things work and click. So, that's the broad overview, but across those programs and across whatever questions you have, I'm happy to stick around as long as you like.
Wonderful.
Are there questions in the committee?
I have one, and I'm sure you've not prepared the data.
You.
I was like, maybe I was speaking out of turn.
Well, you started speaking before you acknowledged. So, I was trying to like work on that while you were talking, sharing.
One, you mentioned that like a third of the students are participating in the program, which is fantastic. I'm wondering also if we know what the demographics of those students look like. Are they looking like a solid cross-section of our population? Or are we, you know, making sure we have opportunities for students? You mentioned musical instruments and, you know, I immediately think, you know, those are rather expensive. And are we making sure that students have access to the things they need to be, feel like they can participate?
Sure, I can answer to a little bit of that. So, I've looked at some of the disaggregated data. I, for what I can quote off the top of my head, of that, 331 students, about 40% of them are students of color, the remainder are white students, which is not quite in line with the demographics of the school. I think one of our longer-term aims is to match that demographic of our program to the school. So, right now, it's about 60, 40 of white students to students of color. I haven't looked at the disaggregation for socioeconomic status, but we found that that's another important thing for the data. And we do tend to look at that year to year. I just don't know what it is this year. But that is something, and you're absolutely right to name something like music equipment. Our school rental program, we've been able to hold the rental prices for things at certainly a comparatively low level to other schools or to local businesses that run out instruments. We also have a tiered fee structure for that. We try to use those kinds of models across our program.
Thank you.
Sure. Stanley?
So, yeah, so thank you for this presentation. You know, one thing was interesting, so you were talking about the kids finding a home within the school and like their, sort of their tribes. And I've had an interesting experience where my kids are apart just enough that I've seen, over the course of the years, they've each had different touch points with the musical. And on the outside, of course, the musical is amazing and everybody should go check that out, because it's incredible production for our high school. But there's like this parallel inside experience that happens too, because it's such a, remember Principal Jackson saying that outside of, with the exception of graduation, it's the largest cohort activity that happens at the high school. And it brings, you have the dance kids, you have the theater kids, you have the music kids, you have the acting, it's like all sorts of, and the tech kids and such a high level of integration with students with special needs. Can you just talk about that experience from, as like from an educator's standpoint, how you've seen that evolve and how kids all interact with each other when you have this like joyous chaos of a mix of different types of students?
Sure. Well, I think joyous chaos is a good description. I just came from, before this meeting, the theater tech work, which goes into the evenings. And there are about 50 students around the stage of all different walks of life and levels of experience and grades in the school, all hammering and sawing away and assembling things. And if you want to ever get a glimpse of that kind of creative chaos, peek in the auditorium some night en route to a school committee meeting. And I mean that genuinely. Feel free to peek in anytime and see that work happen. Because I think we do have a story about process that we usually don't get to tell as often as we like. We're glad that performances work and people receive them well. But the experience students get on the through line of that really is, I think, the heart and soul of the work. I was reading, you know, out of the blue, one of those kind of articles about most looked-for skills in young employees. And they're mentioning things, of course, like creative skill, making team leadership, being able to solve problems on the fly. And we think about in the performing arts as one of the departments that gets to focus a lot on what we call synthesis. There's so much work of analysis and breaking things down in school and being able to see the pieces and working with that. And we spend a lot of time trying to assemble pieces and put things together. So, across our program, that process of synthesizing things in a sense of creative spirit is really big. The musical happens to be one of those vehicles to do it. And we've been really glad for that. And we also are trying to broaden the number of those vehicles, because the musical is wonderful. It's one thing of many and we hope to keep adding. Ms. Spitzer, do you, I'm calling on you only because I can't see you otherwise. If you have any questions or comments, you're welcome, otherwise. I'm just curious, when we're thinking about some of this kind of equipment that you need, and obviously, it has a longer usable life than, it's not literally disposable in the sense to use it once and it's gone. It's also not the same thing as like paving a parking lot. So, where does this fit in our budgeting process? Is it a line item in the operating budget or is it in the capital budget? Where?
So, it depends on the items, right? So, something that we'll actually want to bring to you perhaps on the 29th is some about the last bullet point in high school auditorium upkeep. There's some things that could be done kind of a bit at a time, as Mr. Bechtold suggested. And then, there's other things in terms of like the seats at the auditorium that you, there's, how many seats? Like, is it 800? Yeah. So, you sort of have to go all in on that. And so, we want, we actually have some thoughts to share that I think we'd be getting a little out of ourselves now. So, some of it would be in the capital budget and some of these items have been, if you look at the, like, the long-term capital budget, some of these items, high school auditoriums, for example, is in that. And other ones, you know, about instrument replacement, those tend to be more line items within the operating budget.
Shadon?
Speaking of supporting the financial health of the performing arts, is there any recently formed parent booster organization you want to give a plug to at this juncture?
Well, yes, and one of the members of it is just over to my right here.
Strategically, no.
We are looking for ways for parents and community members to be able to be greater supports to us. I think one of the challenges we have is not only money, but also time and for all those concerts and performances to come up and for all these things to get built and made. It helps to have that kind of infrastructure as well. And we're also hoping that that serves as another kind of outreach. I think one of our keen concerns is that we really can make ourselves as available to everyone as possible. And those resources of time and money and curriculum all kind of need to come together to create that programming. So, we're hoping that that is one piece of it, for sure. I mean, I admire, deeply admire Amherst Educational Foundation, but I also, I just think that it's like the booster clubs for various sports. The, this is heretical. I don't know if anyone's going to want to throw something at me who works in the district. But this is, we've already been talking about how this is an integral part of the student experience, their growth. We've talked about that. I mean, restorative justice is supported by AEF. There has, I mean, it's, it can be a partnership and that's very healthy. But the reality is, there has to be also, especially looking for capital items, looking out over 10 years, we have to work these, some of these things into or some portion of these things into our capital budget as well. It can't just be relied upon for, you know, the enormous generosity and commitment of our community. I don't think, I mean, I'm afraid of saying this, but I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, it's, we have a different subject of fees on our agenda as well. And to me, the notion of moving out of the core curriculum and essentially creating what might otherwise feel like luxury items out of things that are in fact integral to a high-quality educational experience is problematic. By the way, how many participate this year in the music lab? We're still racking up numbers, because we just finished. It looks like we'll be around 150 or so. And is there a range of like projects that are coming out of it in terms of students just sort of learning and others who are going to record a hit album? Always. Are you talking about the school musical or the music program? No, I'm talking about the digital music lab. Oh, the musical, digital music lab. Oh, that, that, the goal right now is to get more students in. It's still a young core. So, we're trying to build up enough capacity to look towards maybe advancing to a next-tier course if we can. We might experiment with some ALPS next year that look at that kind of option. We definitely want to invite students into that. That is such a perfect example of how technology and curriculum and an invitation for new students to feel like they can be creators is really huge. One of our big challenges, I would say, at the high school is how do we support students in the curricular day to have those experiences as young creators? As wonderful as the things like the musical are, they are extracurricular technically. And that does limit certain kinds of student participation, students that don't have that time or ability to make their. So, when we get to something like the digital music lab, we can really kind of put our money where our mouth is. Cool. Ms. Adonius then, Mr. Manino.
Thank you. I didn't even know you noticed. The magic chair. I was just struck recently, you know, these kinds of comments are sometimes not helpful, so please excuse me. But there was a video that was on social media just a couple of months ago of a district in Cape Cod, I believe, that was sort of doing a welcome back to school community. And the students actually performed this incredible, did you see this?
No.
I don't remember what the song was, but they did this incredible version of like, you know, a pop song. But it was basically the entire, like, you know, theater, you know, student groups and their, you know, chorus groups. And it was just a huge, like, all-school process. But it just struck me, as Mr. Nakajima was talking about, the importance of incorporating your needs into our capital planning and, you know, and more formal budget process. Simultaneously, I think, and we've talked about this before, is the need to really promote this, you know, the program that's going on here at the high school, because it is so incredible and so many people get excited about it when they hear it and see it. So, I'm wondering if there, if any thought has been given to promoting the, you know, the programs in more formal ways and adding that to the budget. So, thinking about ways of, you know, whether it's promotional stuff that happens downtown. I know that usually they sort of string the banner across, you know, Main Street or whatever. But doing more things like that to sort of build excitement throughout the year, help both students and families know what's going on in here from day to day and if they're not already members of, you know, one of the groups that you preside over, to consider it, you know, and to strongly encourage their participation and their involvement. Because, again, for so many different reasons, you know, both educational, but also social-emotional and, you know, mental well-being, we were talking a lot about that just recently tonight. You know, it seems like theater and, you know, theater-related activities help promote all of those things so much that it's worth pursuing in a more promotional way, I guess, than maybe we are prone to do.
I think so too. And I appreciate your comments on that, because there is something about the visibility of the program that's really integral to our success. And by that, I mean, I think there are students that are very tapped in to that world. It's almost like they can receive the information telepathically at this point about what's going to happen next. And then, there are students that have no clue that there really even is a theater program or dance program. And I would say that is something that we need to do more work on right now, both within the school, but also within the community. So, I think that's a really pertinent point. I think it also speaks back to one of our challenges, which is feeling spread thin on the stuff we currently offer and where do you also bring that in. But we recognize that if we're going to continue to grow and indeed, kind of match that longer-term goal of our program's demographics, meaning the school demographics, that's going to be integral to that. So, thank you. Mr. Manino?
For the second time this evening, an acronym has been used. What is ALPS?
Oh, I'm very sorry. Alternate Learning, Alternative Learning Program? Did I get that right? Yeah, okay. So, it's basically an independent study would be a shorthand for it. It's a way for a student or a group of students to work with a teacher above and beyond the curricular classes.
Independent study?
Yeah, and often for credit of some kind.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, by the way, at 9:05 in the evening. As to you. Thanks so much.
Thanks so much. Great.
So, the, it looks like we have a run-through of a number of Sean Mangano specials. Right.
It's 9 o'clock, so.
We're only a half hour behind.
That might be a slight, a slight dig at the agenda setting.
No, no.
Don't always make you hang out till night.
I learn a lot by doing, I learn a lot that I wouldn't otherwise learn.
Welcome. So, the next item is school choice hearing.
I can, I don't believe that. Yeah, this one I can do. So, this is an opportunity for the varied members of the public who are here to share their thoughts and opinions. So, the, every, Fred can certainly share his. So, this is, in Massachusetts, every district has to have a school choice hearing each year and then vote on school choice at the following meeting. year and then vote on school choice at the following meeting, so we have to reopen public comment to do that.
So then I hereby reopen public comment for the purposes of a hearing upon the adoption by our school district of school choice. Anyone who's interested in making a comment, feel free to come to the microphone, please identify yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We welcome your comments now. Seeing no presence of, nobody speaking, Ms. Spitzer, there's nobody here speaking to speak. We hereby close the hearing, and I guess welcome any written comments somebody might have who sees this on television, if they have it. Item C on our agenda is assessment formula and budget. People might have noticed in their packets a series of spreadsheets and information that are fascinating. Shawn Mangano?
Thank you. So I'll just do a quick explanation of what's in your packet. So a core group, an advisory group of sorts, met, I think, two weeks ago now, Mr. Nakajima, Superintendent Morris, and representatives from the other towns, met to discuss the assessment method issue for this coming year. And so out of that meeting, a couple op, we've put together a couple options from, which this group is going to meet again next week, I think, and review those options. So I'll go quickly over what those options are, and then any questions you may have. So option A that you're looking at allocates 34% of the assessment based on EQV, which is property values in each member town, and the remaining 66% based on a five-year rolling average of enrollment. The new concept, we've rolled into sort of all of these options, is having a floor built into the assessment method so that, you know, some of the issues we've had in the past is one town will go way up and one town will go way down, and there's like this, you know, or if we could bring them both closer to the middle, we might have a method that works better for everybody. So we try to put in a floor that will help do that. So in this case, it's a 1% floor. It really only applies to the smaller towns because Amherst's assessment never seems to go down, just because of the variables at play into it. So really, it only applies to the smaller towns.
These are all alternatives to the statutory method?
Yes, yep.
So can you explain what a floor is?
Right, so if, if the way the assessment method worked out, let's say Pelham was going to go down 5%, their assessment was going to go down 5% from the prior year, we put in a floor of 1%. So the most it could go down is 1%, and that difference would then be reallocated to whatever town's assessment is going up the most. So again, the objective was to try to bring everyone to the middle and not have this huge sort of disparity.
Ms. D'Oniz?
So if, we are following the bouncing ball on these pieces of paper, the column we should be paying attention to is the middle one, because that's been adjusted for that floor that you just spoke of.
Right, yeah.
For example, Shute's Berry minus 3% in the purple column, but it goes to minus 1% in the middle column. Is that?
Yep, yeah, so the way these are oriented is, the blue is sort of the base that you're comparing it to. The gray, or I'm not sure what it looks like in here, is purple, is what the assessment would be with no adjustment or no floor. The green is if there is, is there, if there's an adjustment required based on whatever method it is, that's what the adjustment would look like in the assessment increases. The white is just informational to give you a sense of what the variables are that are in the assessment method, and then there was a request to put in what the per-people cost is for each method. So that was option A. Option B is just a straight allocation of the assessment based on a five-year rolling average of enrollment, so this is sort of the method that's in our regional agreement currently. Wanted to look at what that would, what results that would look like if we had this floor in place, which we haven't in the past, so this is what the assessments would look like.
And it's illustrative, it's not intended, it's not expected, anticipated that the towns would agree to that.
Right, yeah, it kind of gives up one baseline to look at.
Are any of these alternatives the method currently used this year?
Yeah, they, yep, they all are. Meaning they're alternatives, like, none of these are the method we're using this year. So the method we use this year is a 20% minimum contribution.
You don't have the method that we use this year?
No, we try to look for other methods. That method is still on the table, is sort of a fallback, but we try to look at other methods that might be, have more support. And then the last one is sort of a new concept that we're playing around with that might help, might not help. One of the issues we've always had in the past is Amherst is so different from the smaller towns, and so whenever we try to use any variable to sort of get the, you know, result that feels right, it doesn't work, because the scale is just so different. So this option allocates Amherst's assessment based on one variable, and then whatever's left over, it allocates to the remaining towns based on a different variable. So in this case, Amherst is allocated based on enrollment, and then the amount leftovers is allocated based on, I think it's one-third minimum contribution, which is the state's wealth formula, and then two-thirds enrollment. And so you can see the increases this produces, or the assessment changes it produces, which aren't bad compared to some of the options we've looked at in terms of are they manageable for the towns. It's really, are they manageable, and is the logic or the rationale something they can support?
Ms. D'Oniz?
Can you remind me again what the guidance was from Amherst?
For this year, I think 2.5%? The assessment increase guidance?
Yeah.
Ms. Manino? Have the town representatives discussed any of these yet, or they're going to?
We're going to. They have it, we sent it out for them to look at.
Ms. D'Oniz? Sorry to laugh, but it looks like you're desperately wanting to raise your hands.
No, I've been pausing.
I mean, I think, Ms. D'Oniz?
Yeah, but it's, well, I guess.
I thought you were pausing.
No, I was explaining that I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pausing between hand raising and being polite.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Well, that was very polite of you, then.
Just keep the questions going.
Please continue.
I'll hold my, my comment as Ms. D'Oniz finishes.
You know, so I'm trying to absorb this in the context of what is politically viable, because obviously at the end of the day, this is what can four towns agree to. And so the reason why I was asking what the guidance was from Amherst for 2.5 is I'm looking at the percentages for Amherst, so 2.71, 3.13, 3.14, they're all above 2.5? But 2.71 is the closest, and yet that is the one that has the highest increase for, I'll just say it directly, the town that has had the most concerns about assessment methods recently. And so I'm struggling to see which of these might be the most politically viable, although you all have looked at these numbers a lot longer than I have, so maybe you're seeing something that I'm not.
Right, yeah, so we'll have to work with the town to see what they can support, you know, if it can go above that 2.5% guidance, or if it has to. I think this year in particular, you know, one of the things I always say is, their assessment might go up no matter what assessment method we use, and this is a good example of a year like that, because their enrollment is going up, Amherst's enrollment's going up, and the statutory or the minimum contribution piece is going up for Amherst, too, because of their property values. So really, both measures that are sort of, you know, drive all, most of the assessment methods, it's going up for Amherst. So there's really no way to, there's not a way that is sort of logical to get that down to the 2.5%, if we're looking at level services.
One of the challenges that we had coming out of the four-town meeting was that, and this is reiterated at the small group meeting we had, that there was a general level of dissatisfaction at having an entirely ad hoc methodology, meaning in other words, just sort of saying, let's pick percentages. So this, so just to remind the committee, the really good news is all the towns are on board with a level-funded budget for us. So that's, in my opinion anyways, and I think it was in the committee's opinion, that's exceptionally good news. Figuring out now how to get to an agreed-upon formula that fulfills their stated commitment to try to get us level-funded is the challenge, right? So we're starting from kind of a good place, and one of the things that was expressed by the towns in at least our small group meeting was an opposition to having a wholly arbitrary, pick percentages out of a hat and make them all sort of work out thing. And so the challenge that we're faced, and the state is also, you think the committee knows this, the state has also expressed their dissatisfaction of the district being completely ad hoc with its formulas and wanting it to be based on something that also ideally leads to a permanent solution. And so the challenge, I think, that, Mr. D'Oniz, you're appropriately identifying, is there, part of the discussion is figuring out, how do we get to the towns to agree on something that squares that circle if squaring that circle doesn't actually align with what their original guidance was? And it may not. It may land at a different place.
Yeah, and just on that point, I don't want to belabor the conversation to go deeper, but I know I've heard from two towns now who are asking, you know, so you see that Mr. Mangano has presented a floor, and could there be a ceiling as well? So the way floors and ceilings work is there are leveling mechanisms that can be utilized effectively. I'm not suggesting that we should or should do that, but it's, and other people are noticing the same thing that you're noting, and trying to figure out common sense solutions of how we might be able to approach that. So I think everyone's sort of on the same page of, we got to get to a more permanent solution, and what's a way to do that that perhaps levels some of the, some of the differences?
Yeah, and without, I mean, without thinking that there is a solution, and I'll just put even finer point on that, the question, the point about floors and ceilings came up under the topic of saying, look, we got to come up with finals, you know, a final formula that we can agree to. Nothing really feels right. Everything causes years-to-year gyrations. And one, if one town's ox isn't getting gored this year, then it's getting gored next year, the year after next. What do we do about this? And that led us to a place that actually, a number of years ago, I guess, there had been a proposal, have, you know, floors and ceilings in, in these formulas to base as a backstop to say, let's find a way to do something that no one really, frankly, it's unpalatable, no one really likes doing it, no one really likes living with it, and people really don't like it, towns really don't like it when the, the numbers change radically, but we got to come up with something. And so this is trying to respect that reality. Ms. D'Oniz, you said you had something you wanted to say earlier.
I guess more of a question. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, a lot of thinking and work went into preparing these, and there's been a lot of conversations taking place with the towns in between, you know, the four towns meeting and today. I'm curious if there's any one preferred assessment method that seems to be coming out ahead of the others in your mind, given, you know, what you know about our finances and town finances and all of that? Or would you rather not say?
I think I'd rather wait till the group meets one more time and we go through it, and I kind of get the feedback from them. I think these were sort of trials to see what the numbers came back, see what numbers came back, and if in the future years, they look like they're manageable. But I think I want to get sort of that feedback first before.
Well, can I put the question in another way, maybe? So are there any, is there any assessment method or any assessment methods that you just can't live with? Like, you know, if it would happen, it would be devastating, right? We've kind of teetered on that conversation before.
I mean, I think truly, this going to the full statutory method is the one where, you know, we may be headed there, but when we look at the volatility from year to year, that's where you get the real volatility.
With the statutory?
With the full statutory method. So if we can't all agree on something else, that's probably where we're going to end up. And that's the one where, from a budgeting standpoint, it's no good. You know, from projecting standpoint, it's no good, and most likely, one or two towns are going to get hit really hard every year, every other year. So that's sort of, for me, the worst, sort of the worst-case scenario.
So, I mean, and, you know, and I, it strikes me that we haven't, we've sort of said that, and we've said it the way that you've just said it now, and it feels like maybe we need to say that a little more clearly and more strongly, right? That this is severely detrimental if we go to that method. And I think, you know, the chair mentioned it in opening remarks, you know, the last at the four towns meeting that we had back in December, but I feel like we can't state it enough. We kind of have to keep saying this over and over and over again, because if we get to a point where the towns cannot agree on an assessment method, and we end up in a place, like you said, where, you know, there's huge volatility from year to year, it's actually not benefiting any of the communities, it's not benefiting our students, it's not benefiting our schools, and it's certainly not benefiting the communities. So, you know, can we say that and in our meetings and have that become part of our narrative? And we should be leading with that, you know, we don't want to get there, right? Like, let's actually then try to find a conversation that makes sense, you know? Anyway, I just, I feel like it's important enough for us, for us to, we can't overstate that.
Ms. Kaczynski?
So a couple of followings. I agree, we need to state it, and I think we need to, I think we've had a tendency to state it in terms of why it's bad for our school, as opposed to why it's bad for the towns and the taxpayers, right? Not being able to, to plan, having to make big cuts on elementary schools or police departments or fire departments to try to balance that budget. I don't think that message may be quite, is as clear. It's easy for us to say, it really wrecks our school budget. It's a little bit, you know, more pointed to say, what is it, what's the impact on your town when that happens?
Can I respond real quick? Sure. I think the hard part, and I think you're right, I think the hard part of that is sometimes the first-year savings that some towns get is sort of tantalizing, like, oh, look at all, everything we could do. I think it's the out-years where it's like, all right, well, once you get that one-time savings, then you're in this really unpredictable place going forward. So I think that's the challenge that we have to sort of illustrate.
Right, and I think these charts go a long way to doing it, and, and I know why you don't have the statutory method in here, but in terms of speaking to the, to the public, not just the leaders of the town, I think it would be helpful to have a chart with the same assumptions that said if it were just the statutory method, what's the swings that you're looking at? Just to complete the package.
Okay. How much more time do we have?
Five minutes.
Five more minutes?
I can do five.
Now, hold on a second. So in five minutes, dear people watching this broadcast, we're going to run out of battery power, which means we're not going to be recording anymore. Our meeting is going to continue because we have a lot of work to do. I apologize for the technical snafu that leaves us short of being able to film the entire meeting. There are going to be minutes for the full meeting that'll be approved by the committee and published, and if there's a topic of particular and acute interest that has, that's further on the agenda, in addition to looking at the minutes, I would welcome you reaching out to obviously the superintendent, to DeWes Moreland, who'd have the minutes, as well as also to myself, if you want to discuss this any further. I apologize for the inconvenience and appreciate your tuning in and watching our meetings and participating as a member of the public. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I think the, you know, the one reason why I don't do the full statutory is for the very reason of it's really hard to project. You know, I could make some assumptions, but with that, the assumptions are truly sort of shots in the dark, because you have to know reported income levels, you have to know, you know, how the growth is gonna.
I guess you have to do historical data.
Yeah, yeah, and we can do that, and we have, but we can, we can put the historical data out there.
Mr. Manino, and then I think Mr. D'Oniz?
You partially answered my question. I understand why the adoption of the statutory method would have adverse budget implications, but why the volatility?
So when you're on the statutory method, a huge portion of the, about 60% of the assessment is based on a minimum contribution that the state calculates, and that minimum contribution changes pretty significantly, can change pretty significantly year to year for the four towns of our region. So the reasons why it changes, so enrollment, if there's a big sixth grade that moves to seventh grade and a, you know, 12th grade that leaves, it could, it could result in a really large increase. That happened for Leverett last year, their minimum contribution went up $100,000. There can also, every time EQV comes out, which is every two or three years, the new growth gets factored in, that can result in a huge swing in the minimum contribution. If, you know, one town had a lot of new growth, another town, their, their properties devalued, that can shift the, the relationship. And then income levels is the other one. So, and there's probably eight other factors that play into it, but those are the three big ones that create the volatility.
It might be helpful to look at it historically, so that people can get a view of it. It also helps make that case. Mr. D'Oniz?
So, yeah, so plus one on everything that Ms. D'Oniz and Ms. Kaczynski said, of leading with this theme of volatility, and I do really like that suggestion of using the back years, you know, to show what it would have been had, had the statutory method been in full effect to prove that volatility. Then you don't have to defend assumptions, then that's, that's, it is what it would have been. And it may be useful to show, I mean, you can play around with it, but, you know, if you were showing the back years of some of these models that had ceilings and floors about, oh, but if we had had this, then you would have had this, might reduce volatility. I also think the volatility conversation and that problem is something everyone's going to be keenly aware of, particularly if they're not on like the school, school board, they'll, they'll understand that volatility impacted that, and it sets up they'll understand the volatility impact of that, and it sets up the conversation about using the ceiling and the floor really nicely. And in fact, I think you could introduce those two variables, you know, do whatever spreadsheet magic you want to do, you know, offline, and play around with that, because there could be some really interesting combinations of how you, you know, maybe, maybe the floor is zero percent, you know, maybe the ceiling is five percent, and sort of tweak those, and then see what comes out in terms of, you know, backtesting what, how it would have been. I think, I think it really sort of sets up that, like, if you could sort of guarantee a bounded volatility, that's something people could live with. More so, and that might be able to get people to let go of that first tantalizing year of, ooh, we save three percent or four percent.
Yeah, everything makes sense, and most of it is what we did, we've done, like, the last two, not the last working group, but the two prior, I mean, that's exactly what we did. We looked at the statutory method, we went backwards, we went forwards, we project, you know, everything you said is exactly what we did, but we can pull that back out, we can update it.
I think it's worth doing so. Ms. Spitzer, do you have anything?
No, I don't think I have anything to add up this morning.
Okay. So, I think our hope is that out of even possibly this Thursday, I don't think it's next Thursday, I think it's this Thursday, that we're going to, we're, we, you know, obviously, the groups, the folks coming back together are going to have some guidance for us on what they've heard and talked about. They're also going to have to go back out again. This is not at a boil, you know, there's, the sort of the vibe I thought we had going was that people were looking for a solution that would, that we could both have intermediate, point toward long-term, but also protect our budget this year. So, any other questions?